This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 1st. This meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter, Channel 193, and live streaming on their eMedia website. All councilors who are participating in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the Secretary of Order by Governor Baker extended to March 2023, which allow us to do so. I remind both the members of the City Council and the public to remain mute under recognized by the City Council President. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Marianne.
Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Dave Newyer. Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zaret.
Present.
Please stand up for the place of the Legion. Place of the Legion.
The flag of the United States of America, including the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We take a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public speak time. Is anyone here that want to address something to the council? I will allow you to speak to the council for three minutes. Please be respectful and please only talk to the council.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. Good evening, community of East Hampton. My name is Cindy Mojiga and I am the Diversity Inclusion Liaisoner at East Hampton High School. And today I'm here to invite the community of East Hampton to two main events who will be hosting East Hampton High School and the Diversity Inclusion Center at the high school. So the first event is going to be on February 10th and that will be the Black History Museum. We'll have Ms. Renika Montgomery as a presenter and that will be from 5:00 to 7:00 at East Hampton High School in the auditorium. The second event will be hosted here at the City Council Chambers on February 17th, 5:00 to 7:00, and we will have the Black Heroes Planner. What we have is eight panelists and the youth from the Diversity Leadership Club will be asking the questions. We hope you can make it and celebrate with us since these events are all created by the youth of East Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And can you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Doris Manson. I live at 6th Night Avenue, East Hampton. And I'm going to read a letter that I sent to the council, the Library Association, the library director, and the mayor. I have previously expressed my opinion that the conversation going forward between the city and the Library Association must be a public conversation. I want to encourage it to begin as soon as possible. The public has not been aware until very recently of the hurdles and challenges of the association. The city and association must together realize that the public has to be a participant in the conversation. The association is aware of this because three years ago they hosted a visioning session with the city. This included city planner, Council Rothschild, and library patients, patrons. A report was finalized and delivered by James Witsett Architects of Greenfield. I can only surmise that the mayor knew of this assessment as there were feasibility descriptions of the soon-to-be-empty school buildings as a possible library. I think, however, the City Council and the general public was not aware of this study. Perhaps the silence was due to COVID closures and learning to do business in different ways. My recommendation is that the City Council create an ordinance to form a study committee to guide the process of a new relationship between the city and the association. We need a timeline of the transition and also new channels of communication. The public process is necessary to grow visibility and support. I think we all agree that a better-funded public library and a different building are what our community needs and deserves. Perhaps it is time to consider if the library should become a city department. We must remain crystal clear that our goal is for the library to build community within a safe, comfortable, and welcoming facility. Most importantly, we must also say to our neighbors who are members of the association to please imagine a public process. Just gonna see if I had more time to... Just have a few seconds. Well, I was reading a summary of their PowerPoint from December and they say the library board needs to be laser-focused on financial viability and strategic topics like a possible new location. And the municipalities must creatively collaborate with the library board. I think it has to be a two-way, definitely two ways. Three ways. And this is the illustration I used almost 30 years ago, another than the city, which was a town. It still holds. Everybody's got equal sides. Maybe I drew this a little bit bigger, but I didn't mean to. And there's the library in the middle. So it's a three-way channel. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Doris. Anyone else? Anyone remote? Yep, you can go.
Hello. My name is Jim Nash. I live at 18 Montview in Northampton. I am the City Council President in Northampton. And I just want to thank President Gomez and for the council spending some time with myself and Councilor Foster this evening, you know, demonstrating how you guys hold your meetings in this hybrid format. We are currently still all remote and we appreciate, you know, having this opportunity. So thank you and I'm gonna observe a little bit longer. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else? Seeing none. Communication from elected official boardroom committee. Counselor Zaret.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I've been doing a lot of listening and reflecting on a tragedy that occurred in our country recently and that was the murder of Tyree Nichols. And as a human being living here in East Hampton and also the Chair of Public Safety, I felt compelled to say something. There's no words to describe the census loss of life that occurred here. It's a failure of policing and it's a failure of humanity, what happened in Ventus, Tennessee. It's encouraging to me that this incident has been so unanimously criticized by law enforcement. And I reached out to our local police department to get more understanding about policies and procedures and understanding what transpired there in a state far away from us. And I appreciate the input and information provided to us, or provided to me by our police department. There's a lot I could say. I could probably stay here for hours talking about this. But I just want to simply now acknowledge the needless loss of life and the ongoing need for improvements in training across the country and certainly within our city, although I do feel that they've been responsive to similar incidents and proactive so that incidents like this can stop appearing so frequently on our TV screens. Rodney King, George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and now Tyree Nichols. We have to keep saying their names because we have to acknowledge what's going on and make efforts to change it. And then I just really briefly, Mr. President, since I made a promise to this council, I just wanted to introduce some brief statistics about mass shootings. Since we last met, we met on January 18th. There's been 20 mass shootings in this country since then. 39 people killed and 70 injured. This is highlighted, certainly I think most people saw on the news, the shooting in Monterey Park during the Lunar New Year celebration that killed 12 people. And then just days later in Half Moon Bay, seven people were killed and one injured. There was a nightclub shooting in Baton Rouge where 12 people were injured. Fortunately, no one died. And as many people know, it wasn't on a mass shooting, but we saw an aggressive use of firearms in Holy Oak Mall, which is our neighbor just over the mountain, just in our backyard. And I promised this council, these are things I would keep talking about until we have solutions and once again that we can not have this polluting our news and be kind of a constant omnipresent thing that we're seeing in our media. So thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counsel? Seeing none. Mayor's communication. Madam Mayor? Nothing. Correspondence announcements from the President and the Vice President Communication. Today, the city do a proclamation and our Vice President is gonna read it.
Whereas in 2023, national black history theme is resistance, impacting our nation to be truer to the vision found in the U.S. Constitution. And whereas President Biden and Vice President Harris ask us to stand true to the framers' intent for equal treatment of all. And whereas our president reminds us, black Americans have made a way not only for themselves, but also have helped build a highway for millions of women immigrants, other historically marginalized communities, and all Americans to more fully experience the benefits of our society. And whereas our Vice President shared in 2022 that there is one American history. Black History Month was established to teach the history that is too often has not been taught, the history of black excellence and leadership in America, and also the history of resistance and resilience in America. We are clear, black history is American history. It is living, breathing history we create every day. Let us recommit to honoring their legacy with action. Let us continue their fight and our fight for justice and equality and opportunity for all so that generations to come may stand on our shoulders and reach even greater heights. And whereas the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts celebrates the ongoing impact of Black History Month without acknowledgement dims the role of resistance and resilience distinct in our nation's story and progress. Therefore, I, the East Hampton City Council... But it says, "I, Nicole LaChappelle, our mayor." Mayor of East Hampton, do hereby proclaim the month of February to be Black History Month in the city of East Hampton. And I think that we should vote on that.
You want to vote, right?
We don't have to vote. Just read it.
Yeah, just read it. Do you want to say something else?
No.
Got it. All right. I'm gonna say a few things. First, today we start another month about the Black History Month. And a lot of people, probably including myself, we do just checkmarks. We just read a book this month. We just post picture this month about the black history. And we shouldn't be doing that. We should start doing more. We should start putting actions where we put our words. We should give them the same opportunities. We should open our doors, but not just open the door. We should let them come in. Let them participate. Give them the same opportunities. They can be our leaders. And we can prove that they can be great leaders. One of them was our president a few terms ago. Just want to remind everybody, this is not just a checkmark in our calendars. We start have, we need to start doing stuff for everybody, especially for the black community. We have one more minute, but I will open the, I will take a motion to open public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
I want to let the council know that we are going to continue the $3 million from free cash for stabilization accounts. We were supposed to have a meeting last Wednesday to discuss these, but due to the fake snowstorm, we canceled it. And because we weren't able to get the treasurer and all of the parties necessary for that discussion, we had a meeting last night, but that dealt with only the council budget. So I'm gonna make a motion after public comment, if there is any, to continue this public hearing.
Thank you, counselors. Is anyone from the public? They want to participate in today's public hearing? They were gonna do a continuation for the next meeting, but you have the opportunity to participate tonight if you want to. Seeing none. Counselor Rist?
I move that the supplemental appropriation of $3 million from free cash to general capital and tax rate stabilization funds be continued to the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to continuing the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Report of Standing Committee's Finance. Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did meet last night and in front of counselors here. And I sent it out as an email attachment. The Finance Committee approved the budget submission for the FY '24 budget for the City Council. In this budget, you'll note that the salary lines have increased due to the fact that we voted to increase the salaries for the City Council and also we did a school committee, but that's why that's up. You see at the bottom of the page, Barbara did a little detail on that. So also, we agreed to continue the education and training budget at 900. We did add office supplies at 200 because apparently that's being moved back into departments. And we did add a new line for city attorney services. This $10,000 line, just to be clear, is not gonna change the budget. It is now being dealt with through the mayor. And we felt that for future, for the future, it's important that the City Council have its own line for the city attorney and we're asking the mayor to fund that so that our president can and all of us can have a good idea of what is in our attorney budget. So we added that to the budget. So that's a new line that hasn't been there before. The total is $66,600, which we will submit to the mayor pending full council approval.
Just for clarification, the $10,000 for the city attorney services is part of the full budget, the city budget. We're just moving it from one section to our City Council budget. That way, the City Council President will have a better idea what the council is really spending on the city attorney.
In other words, it doesn't increase the budget at all. We're not asking for any increase in the budget.
That's correct. Any Counselor have any question about the budget or want to make any comment? Counselor Zaret?
Just... So I think that's, I think that's both wise and I appreciate the thought about the attorney line. And you could tell me if this is not an appropriate question to ask now. What would be the mechanism if that portion of the budget was exhausted? Would the president make a request for appropriation to increase it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, that would be a supplemental appropriation, just like there is now. But it would be under the control of the council now. Now it's up to the mayor whether or not she wants to extend it. If we, there is some analysis of what's being spent now in the mayor's office, but this is more...
It's gonna be more accurate.
More transparent for all the council.
Great. Thank you.
And it's gonna be more accurate because right now when the city solicitor send the bill, he will include a few things in the bill too. If we have city council business, but for example, the city planner been asking for something too. It's better for them to send just one bill. And this one, we're gonna request from the city solicitor, if the mayor approve it at the end, to send just a bill for the city council.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor Rist? No, you have some questions. Counselor Kuzinski?
I just wanted to say that I am very appreciative of the move to make this happen with regard to the attorney line and the money's being allocated from the other account, the mayor's account, to the city council account. I think I've been advocating that at least five years, maybe longer. Yeah, I think it will help with clarity for the counselors and I think the process will be very clean and easy. So I am very much in favor of this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Riley?
Yeah, so I guess just the question is, can you confirm? Does this mean that there will be a new process for city counselors to request solicitor review on new policies? So, you know, would that be something that, you know, we would come to you, Council President? Or does the process stay the same?
The process is the same. We have a rule in place. Every time the council have to go to the solicitor, have to, need to, need the approval of the City Council President and that will be still in place. Any other Counselor? Counselor Rist?
Okay, I move that the full council approve the requested fiscal year 2024 council budget to be sent to the mayor of $66,600.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to send to the mayor the City Council fiscal year 2024 budget. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
Yes, the council, sorry, the Finance Committee will meet next Wednesday, February 8th at 5:15 in Room 1, and we will be discussing the stabilization funds as well as the three new business items. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. For the safety, Counselor Zaret?
Nothing has changed since our last meeting. We have not met. We have no new agenda items currently. There's nothing to extend. And we are still meeting on February 28th at 6:00 PM in Conference Room 1. And I'll update at our next meeting the details of that agenda just in case anything gets added on. Thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Riley, appointment?
Thank you, Mr. President. There is no business before the Appointment Committee currently. A new meeting will be scheduled once a new appointment is put before the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Orders, Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did meet last week. We discussed the vacant storefront ordinance and we have come to a place where we're ready to bring that forward. I am gonna refrain from bringing that forward tonight and setting a public hearing as I wanna, there's a couple little loose ends I just need to tie up before we have the public hearing. So I'm gonna hold off and set the public hearing for the, not next meeting, but the following meeting. And we are still looking at the safe and fair access to legally protected reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare services. We have some new language and we are going to have a meeting to discuss that new language and formally put that forward. Probably not at our next meeting, but at the second meeting after that because our next meeting is going to be to discuss the pay plan Exhibit A and Exhibit B, which I realize is a little time-sensitive. So as soon as I can connect with my other committee members, we will set a meeting for that. And that's probably gonna be within the next two weeks. I'm just need to, there's a couple items on my calendar that are fluid, so I want to make sure that those don't collide. But I think that we're good as far as extension dates. Thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor. Property, Counselor Kuzinski?
No report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Rules? Counselor Rist?
Yes, Mr. President. We had a very good debate last meeting on both two charter parts of the charter amendments we're looking at as well as the ordinance to create a new Bs committee. I call it a climate action committee. I thought we had a great discussion and we've come up with some language I think we'll conclude and be able to put that forward to create this committee. We will be meeting on the 23rd at 5:00 PM in Conference Room 1 to finish that discussion. Unfortunately, because of my own personal schedule and other meetings going on, that's the earliest we could meet. So February 23rd at 5:00 PM is the next Rules and Government Relation Committee meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. No business. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a request to establish a donation account for the Mountain View School. And so that is something that we are going to take action on tonight before I make a motion. Do you want to...
I want to know if any Counselor is against it. Seeing none. Mr. Vice President?
Okay. So I'd like to move to establish a donation account for the Mountain View School pursuant to the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to establish an account for the purpose of receiving funds designated for the Mountain View School, grades K through 5.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds for the request to establish donation account for Mountain View School, grade K to 5. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three supplemental appropriations. I'm gonna do first reading of all three. The first is a request for approval of the following appropriation for legal expenses. The amount requested is $20,000 to be transferred from the free cash account to the, transferred to the legal account, $20,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to expend the legal budget for the current fiscal year. The second appropriation is the amount requested is $194,000 to be transferred from free cash to be transferred to miscellaneous professional and technical services, $25,000; EMS supplies, $35,000; maintenance agreements, $13,000; education, $3,500; sick leave buyback, $38,000; repairs to vehicles, $35,000; equipment, $37,000; building repairs, $7,500 for the following purposes: miscellaneous and professional technical services, third-party billing agency costs for EMS revenue collections; cost for supplies on ambulances; maintenance agreements, service contracts for EMS equipment as required by state ambulance license; education contractual requirement for tuition reimbursement; sick leave incentive, cost for sick leave buyout retirement of fireman Dave Safran; repairs to vehicles, work needed on 2003 Engine 1 to bring it into safety standard and ladder one controls and bucket and aerial platform; firefighting equipment, purchase of new gear for two new firefighters being hired and replacement of ballistic protection equipment; and finally, building repairs, installation of locks on doors, diesel exhaust removal system, annual service, and annual service Vision 21 system in the fire dispatch. Finally, we have a supplemental appropriation of $73,390.70 to be transferred from free cash, $73,390.70, to be transferred to police-based salary, $48,132.24; police medical expenses, $2,175; police uniform expenses, $7,323; police education and training, $6,400; FY '22 medical bills, $9,360.46 for the following purpose, to cover the payout of DLT Propylarchix Retirement, I apologize if I mispronounced that name, Retirement Effective, 7/16/22; the cost of sending two recruits to the police academy, medical exams, mandatory clothing, equipment, and tuition; uniform expenses for one new hire, and the cost of an FY '22 IOD medical bill dated 9/14/21. I move that these items, these three items be sent to the Finance Committee for review as well as to set a public hearing for 6:15 in these chambers at our next meeting.
We have a motion and a second to move the three supplemental appropriations to schedule a public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marianne.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes. Look like we do everything we have in our agenda for today's meeting. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Marianne?
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Motion passes.